It being six o'clock on December 5th, 2022, I will call this meeting of the Chelmsford Select Board to order. Please join me in the pledge.
I.
For reasons to apply United States of America and to the Republic, the Justice stands on nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up, we have our public service announcements, Ken.
The first one of two is the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, and it's going to be offering Try Transit Month, the entire month of December. Ride for free, all LRTA buses and Roadrunner vehicles. And the LRA is trying to introduce the public transportation to everyone in our community, so please try transit and leave the driving to them. There's some nice benefits for everybody to think about. Convenient access to not only going back and forth work, medical services, shopping destinations, malls, plazas, stores, restaurants, and things like that. There's less traffic on the road and helps us reduce our energy consumption, helps with economic development, a clean air environment. So get connected to the LRTA. For more information, you can visit lrt.com and find out what you need to find out. Our second public service announcement is a notice to the town of Chelmsford. It's a public notice for the spring 2023 annual town meeting. We will be convening the town meeting on April 24, 2023. Articles to be included on the warrant must be submitted to the office of the town manager at 50 Belareka Road here in this building by 4:00 PM on Tuesday, January 3rd. Petition articles must carry the signature of at least 10 voters. If you would like more information, you can contact Town Manager's office at 978-250-5202.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have public input. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public input? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone in this room. It looks like there's someone coming into the breakout room, so let me just check on that. Tom Williams, does anybody recognize that?
They have their hand up?
Well, they weren't in the room yet. Okay, I'll just call again. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public input?
Tom Williams.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to committee vacancies.
So for our current committee vacancies for December 5th, the Arts and Technology Education Fund Committee has one unexpired three-year term. Bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee has one three-year term. The CCA advisory committee has three one-year terms. Commissions on Disabilities looking to fill one three-year term. Community Action Program Committee has four one-year terms. Community Preservation Fund Committee has one three-year term. Council on Aging Board, one unexpired three-year term and two three-year terms. Cultural Council, one unexpired three-year term. Our DEI Committee has one unexpired three-year term and one unexpired three-year term. One ends in 2023 and one in '24, so that's the difference between those two. Holiday Decorating Committee has two one-year terms. Parade Committee, all applicants are welcome to apply. One-year terms ending on July 31, 2023. Permanent Building Committee has one three-year term. Recycling Committee has one one-year term. If you're interested in serving on a town board or committee, please complete an online application available on the town's website, or you can reach out to the Town Manager's office at 978-250-5202, or email
Thank you, Ken. And next up, we have a discussion of the November 23rd incident at Center Brick House.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we have our police chief, James Spiny, and fire chief Gary Ryan to speak about an incident that happened just before midnight on the day before Thanksgiving at Center Brick House Pizza.
Good evening, Metting Chair. I'm Senator Board, Mr. Manager. So I know you have a copy of both the Fire Department and the Police Response Report, but just to kind of paint a picture and walk you through it. So on Wednesday, November 23rd, at 11:48 PM, we were dispatched for an alarm activation at Brick House Pizza. So the response from us was the captain of the fire headquarters with the ladder, Engine 4 out of East Chelmsford and Engine 5 out of South Chelmsford. So that's one captain and seven firefighters that responded to that call. The officer arrived first and was encountering an issue with the parking lot. This is a known issue that we've discussed with the owners of Brick House, probably about two or three weeks ago, both the police staff and fire staff. So it's an issue that Mr. Mickle is well aware of and that we're going to address come the spring. Basically, there's some signage issues regarding the fire lane, striping. So Mr. Mickle is working with us on this issue. However, for the officer, he directed wisely so, all the apparatus to remain out of the parking area and to stage in Central Square. When the crews arrived on scene, they were met with a considerable crowd on the deck. This is the deck outside of Brick House. Based on the reports, there were 200-plus patrons. It took us approximately 10 minutes to access the building. The police arrived on scene, requested additional resources to help disperse the crowd. We finally made entry into the building, and the crew noticed that the fire alarm system wasn't signaling the occupants. And what I mean by that is, the fire alarm system should be activated. The audiovisual stuff should be going off. And they were silenced, and it was reportedly by a member of Brick House prior to our arrival. As a result of that, that action, silencing the fire alarm system, interfered with our ability, both police and fire, to get the patrons out of the building. So unfortunately, as a result of that, we have issued a citation and a fine to Brick House for the failure to evacuate the building. And we don't take this lightly. It's not the first time this has happened. They were warned last year for the same issue. Last year, they were given a written warning. This time, they're being fined and cited. Once we got inside the building, we were notified that there was an injured staff member who was assaulted. So we had to request an ambulance crew to the scene to treat the assault victim. So in addition to the fines, we're issuing $300 worth of fines. There are three separate infractions. One, tampering with the fire alarm system. Two, failure to adhere to the established occupancy limits, which for them is 94 seats, and five patrons, up to 99. And three, failure to evacuate the patrons. So they're being issued three citations totaling $300. So in addition to the fines, myself, Deputy Chief Mike Curran, I mean Deputy Chief Mike Donahue, members of my fire prevention staff, we met with Chief Spiny, Deputy Colin Spence, and members of his staff earlier today. What we're requesting, quite frankly, what we're demanding going forward, is joint public safety details for this annual event. And when I say annual event, you may recall in the past, they would have a tent. And this is a popular event with a lot of people. In the past, they would have 250 people managed by us. 156 people in the tent, 94 people in the building. This annual gathering can work when, and I stress "when," it's properly managed by us. So again, I will take any questions.
And there was no tent this year?
There is no tent, but the way I look at it, the tent may have gone away. This event has not gone away. So basically, what you did is you took the 250 people from the two and you put them into one building. Thank you.
The report does mention a tent, though. I don't know if that's...
So what that is, if you look at the deck, they had a covering over the deck.
Oh, okay.
For that's, so that was the tent.
Members of the Board, good evening. I'm going to do the same thing the fire chief did. I'm going to give you an overview of the police response, and then I'll certainly take any questions with the fire chief you have afterwards. So on 11/23 of this year, at 11:46 PM, a police officer was dispatched to Brick House Pizza for a fire alarm activation. Upon his arrival, he observed a large crowd. He approximated it to be over 250 people inside the establishment. The officer began to give instructions per the request of the fire official on scene. The officer began to give instructions for the building to be evacuated, so the fire department could conduct an investigation as to the cause of the fire alarm. The officer made observations that many in the crowd were intoxicated and not following instructions to leave the building. This resulted in a very slow emptying of the business, as the crowd continued to be extremely uncooperative and hostile towards the officer. Seeing this is occurring, the officer called for additional resources. I'll tell you that almost every police resource we had on duty that night had to respond as a result of the uncooperative nature of the intoxicated patrons. During the evacuation process, a male subject approached officers and advised he had been assaulted by being punched in the face. Medical, as the fire chief articulated, medical did respond and check him out. He was not transported to the hospital. Police sergeant on scene reported he had spoken with the initial officer, as well as with the fire captain, and they advised him that the crowd continued to be hostile to directions being given by fire and police personnel. The on-scene sergeant also made observations of numerous intoxicated subjects loitering in the area, and he also observed several altercations, mostly minor in nature, out in the parking lot, just some pushing and shoving, but nothing that resulted in any arrests. Sergeant also noted that in his opinion, the Brick House staff were completely overwhelmed and unable to control the crowd. I've actually spoken directly with the sergeant on scene, and he told me he came within a few seconds of requesting regional mutual aid as a result of this incident. In his opinion, it was close. I know you've reviewed the report. He said powder keg. He said one or two things going sideways on this would have been a whole different ballgame. So that's a brief rundown of the police response. I share the fire chief's concern on this. I know there's a chance to relook at their licensing for next year. I would certainly urge that any provision be inserted if possible, that police and fire resources be mandated for this event next year. Because I agree, the tent that was in place all over the last few years, I think crowds showed up expecting that. And when that wasn't there, staff did their best to get everybody inside, and they became overwhelmed. I think it was probably three times your occupancy, or, you know, at least two and a half what's supposed to be inside that building.
And just, I think, right. And so both police and fire, so we do want to thank the staff. When they were directed by us, both police and fire, they did help us to get the people out. So I do want to, you know, make that for the record. They did, you know, listen to our direction to get the people out. So thank you.
Is it mainly this event for which you're concerned about police and fire detail, or are there other events?
We have not typically had issues there on New Year's Eve or other events throughout the year. This particular event, because of their past, when they put the tents up and exceeded their capacity with special permitting, that has resulted in larger crowds than typical. So I would, we used to have officers there, as you're aware, along with fire personnel. But over the last couple of years, when the tent went away, that was discontinued, and then we have an incident the other night.
Is there a reason the tent went away?
I think during the COVID years, they didn't see the need for the tent, and there probably might have been some prohibitions with having the tent during that.
I believe the tent went away back in 2018. I think that was the first year without the tent.
Are there any other questions for Chief?
Yeah, just another question. Has there been any other incidents during the year? Is this the only thing that typically arises from there?
So I'll say there has not been a lot. I did do a four-year look back. So this was our first, this was, I know the fire service has been there for some other issues, but as far as the police department's concerned, this was the first disturbance-type incident that we've responded to in 2022, and this was all the way in November. In 2021, we had three incidents, most serious being May 15 of 2021. There was an assault and battery that occurred there where someone was seriously injured, had to be hospitalized, and we did make, pulled charges against the defendant. In October of 2021, reported fight in the parking lot, minor in nature. And in October 10 of 2021, a loud music type of thing. We had no incidents in 2020. And then in 2019, we had five incidents. Again, not serious in nature, fight in the parking lot, subject's gone prior to police arrival. March of 19, fight in parking lot, subject's gone. June of 19, loud music, manager advisor be turned down. September of 19, fight in the bar area. It did require some medical attention, but no charges sought. And in October of 19, a fight inside the bar area, reported assault and battery. Witnesses and victim were uncooperative, so no charges.
If I may, I, for the Board's benefit, I did speak with Attorney Haverty, just to get some guidance about what our options are here. The number of people that were in attendance does violate the license. As I understand it, under the state law, if the Board wanted to take disciplinary action, we could, but we are not obligated to. And we wouldn't face any liability if we choose not, not to act in that manner. If we did want to take disciplinary action, we need to give them advanced notice that there's going to be a hearing. If we simply wanted the Brick House representatives to come speak with us, to have a conversation, that wouldn't require notice of a hearing or anything like that. So the alternatives, as I understand it, include do nothing. At the other end of the spectrum is some type of disciplinary action. And in between that would be to invite them here for a conversation. We could potentially hold off issuing the 2023 license until we have that conversation. And in response to the request that the two chiefs made, we could also put other contingencies in the 2023 license, if we wanted to do that, such as police detail being required at this event. So I don't know if that helps clarify basically what our options are, what we want to discuss.
Well, I think at the very least, we need to have them in here to talk about what happened. As far as any discipline, I think, I mean, I wouldn't want to make any judgment without...
Right. I agree.
...talking to them. But, I mean, what we've heard is this is not insignificant, what happened there that night. So I'll leave it at that for now.
And I'll just offer, Pat, that's kind of at least where my head was at. I think it's worth a conversation, or a conversation is warranted. And I'd also just like to understand what corrective actions they've put in place or intend to put in place.
Right. I mean, I did notice that...
They do a lot for the community, and I recognize that, but this is a very, to me, this is very significant.
Correct.
Anyone else? Could I go around? Mark?
No, I agree with Pat. My main concern, again, is the amount of people that were there, because that can cause the biggest safety issue. You know, the other stuff that Chief mentioned with regard to historical, back four years, did you say, Chief? Yeah, I mean, most of that, I don't want to downplay it, but it's more garden variety type of things that do happen. But this is different. This is where somebody, this could have been if there ever was a fire or there ever was an issue. This is a big problem. And we really rely on management of these establishments to maintain their occupancy limits and so forth, or to get special permits to put up tents and so forth. So, yeah, I would like to hear from them.
George?
Yeah, I think, I think hearing from them is a good idea. I mean, it's just like the, what, the 14th year or something that they've done it? And I think up until a couple years ago, they always have had a detail. I think they used to pay like, I don't know, they used to have, what, four, four, five, four, two and...
Usually a fire, usually a fire officer and several police officers.
Yeah, it was like four or five. It was like $3,000 for the night. And at the time, they had the tent, and it was a lot easier. And I think people have been accustomed to it, and it's the biggest social event of the year. Now, I mean, all the kids from college come, and they all gather in the same place. So, I mean, I think they've always done a pretty good job. And I think they took the tent away partially because of the pandemic, and also because I think it was the first year that the condos were...
Right, right. They issued, and they were concerned...
So I think they tried to take the crowd away from the back.
And there were concerns with the hotel.
The grist mill?
Yeah.
There had been concerns also with the hotel, property owner with the parking and so forth.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, they run a... Normally, they run a pretty good place, and, you know, when you get booze involved, a lot of people, and kids at home for the weekend, you know, things happen. But I think, you know, with good conversation, I think everything gets straightened out.
Okay, Ken?
I totally agree with the rest of my Board members.
So we could invite them to come in for the 19th, and then just hold off whatever vote we take on the license until then? The 2023 license, I'm saying, in case we want to incorporate any special provisions into it for this event?
Well, if we were going to have special provisions, would they have to be at the time we issue the license? I mean, I don't have a problem with renewing the license, even if we may do, you know, have conditions, as long as we could do those conditions later. You know what I mean? I mean, because I don't, I mean, it might take, might take more than one meeting's worth to come up with a full list of conditions that we might want to put in place.
The license doesn't expire till the 31st, so I don't see the downside in waiting until the 19th. And if we can't resolve it, then we can certainly take that approach, I would think. But they still have a license, and we're not shutting them down.
Right.
Paul, what were you going to say?
No, that's, that's fine.
Chiefs, do you have any input into that at all, or?
Well, I think the conversation, I will agree that they are very good to the community. They donate to the Fire Save Program, both Mr. Mickle and his wife, very charitable to the community. You know, I like to see this event work. I agree. People come home. It's popular. But again, when managed correctly, it's been successful. No incidents. And I don't know why we deviated from that. And again, I, the tents came down before COVID, but I agree with the grist mill going in. There was parking concerns, so I'm sure that factored into the decision.
I plan on addressing this with my staff, with Brick House Management as well, separate from what this Board does. Managers and staff are responsible in maintaining control of every establishment. And my concern is the breakdown when there was, in my opinion, plenty of opportunity to realize things were starting to get out of hand.
Yeah.
A phone call should have been made. We would have been glad to have responded and helped them with, with the situation before it boiled over. So I'm going to get to the bottom of that independently of this Board, but I agree that a conversation with management as to what kind of led to the breakdown would be helpful for us all to move forward.
And if both of you would like to come back on the 19th, you're welcome to.
Thank you.
So Paul, will your office take care of extending that invitation?
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next up, we have the annual license renewals. Are there any other discussion points? If not, I'll take a motion.
If we approve these, it's just an entire list?
I think we can approve the list as presented, with the exception of Brick House Center.
Are we doing all the licenses together?
Whatever you prefer.
Does anybody have any discussion points about any of them? If not, I don't see why we can't do them all together.
I agree. So I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 license renewal list as presented, except for the one for Brick House.
Center.
Center.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, flag zero. Okay, Paul, next we have the goals report.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. Where we had a rather light agenda this evening, and it was time, you know, the Board set its goals in August, and so a quarter has transpired. So I've provided the Board with a copy of the goals that you adopted on August 22nd, and then I provided a status report dated December 1st, you know, for the months of September, October, and November. I guess the easiest thing to do is just sort of just walk through them. The first one was on sewer infrastructure. The goal was to establish short, mid, and long-term plans to address sewer capacity and maintenance issues. And then 1B was a sewer near-term approach to establish and execute the town's near-term sewer approach and policy to be implemented until capacity limits are resolved. I sort of just provided a summary at this point for the quarter in terms of the short, midterm, and long-term. Just to be brief, the short term is we replace the sewer moratorium by IDPW, implementing a revised sewer capacity and connections policy that was, again, brought before this Board. And then also, we provide the Board with monthly aggregate sewer flow reports. And then the, we have a special meeting two nights from now, on December 7th, with the Planning Board, Board of Health, and Water Districts, and other stakeholders to discuss water and sewer capacity solutions. In the midterm range, presented, and we spent numerous meetings on a proposed sewer bank policy that was tabled. I came back at the last meeting with the proposed sewer capacity credit transfer policy, again, that will be discussed this coming Wednesday, and you have some provided feedback. And Weston and Hampton Engineers presented the report to the Select Board on the Route 110 Littleton Road sewer main issue. And we are working, in terms of Public Works and I, on preparing requests for the spring town meeting for the next phase of capital investment in pump stations and the assessment of sewer force mains. And then towards long-term, Public Works Director presented a sewer inflow removal pilot program that we're trying to get clarity of whether that could possibly be funded from the earmark, from the state budget, the Economic Development Bill. I have engaged with discussions as recently as, again, this afternoon, I was in Lowell, in the Manager's Office, along with Jenny Rait, the NIMCOG Executive Director, and as well as our managers from the surrounding towns, discussing the needs for sewer capacity, you know, as part of the economic development of the city and the, and the region, the towns, and also the ongoing needs and potential solutions. And so, and I've also had separate discussions with Congresswoman Laurie Trahan's office and Middlesex III Coalition, beating the drum on the fact that if there's, the state has a housing need and economic development desires, that sewer infrastructure, along with water and other infrastructure, have to be paramount, and recognizing the limitations it's currently placing on Chelmsford and other communities. And then Weston and Hampton presented the Pump Station and Sewer Force Main Assessment Report, and we fully complied with the administrative consent order and penalty.
Any comments or questions on that? Any comments or questions on that?
On item two, in terms of road and sidewalk infrastructure, we've just completed the 2022 road construction season. The Department of Public Works completed over $2 million in roadway and sidewalk projects. This included resurfacing of 5.63 miles of roadway along 22 different streets, which cost 1.45 million. There was also an additional $300,000 for spot milling and paving along nine additional roadways. And there was also $116,000 in crack sealing operations to extend pavement life along 10 roadways. And they also, this also included a one-mile length of reconstruction of sidewalks along Borica Road, Fletcher Street, and Middlesex Street at an additional cost of 123,000. Back in September, the Public Works presented a revised 2022 and 23 roadway improvement plan to the Select Board. I envision we'll be coming back probably after the first of the year to talk about the 2023 plan and the 24 plan, as well as giving you and providing the community with the detail of all these roads that I just described and listed in terms of what's gone on and then what we envision in the year ahead and then the plan ahead. The issue of the sidewalk on Turnpike Road is continuing to be worked upon. We had sought an easement from National Grid to install mitigation in order to construct the sidewalk along the side of the roadway. They denied that request. And so, we're really continuing to explore, if it's possible, perhaps even put the sidewalk on the other side of the roadway at a reasonable cost. Because, you know, there is considerable wetlands as you go by the, from the credit union up, you know, towards Warren Avenue. And we're trying to see what may be feasible for sidewalks at that location. And then, as the boards are aware, as Director Clancy noted, that the, the physical assessment of the town's current sidewalks is in process and should be completed in February for a discussion at, as we go into the new construction season in terms of the stakeholders, schools and others in the community. So, I think that that sort of addresses the road and sidewalk infrastructure goal.
By the way, just from my perspective, huge improvement. You see the roadwork that's been done everywhere I drive. And it looks really good. What was done looks good. And I think it's made a big difference.
Thank you. On item number three, which is about truck traffic, continuing to review the existing truck traffic issues and staying cognizant of emerging issues and addressing the whole issues, not, but not limited to North Chelmsford. The Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, as the boards are aware, has given monthly reports, and we've addressed traffic and other safety issues that have arisen. As the board knows, they prevented a detailed investigation of a possible truck exclusion on Swain Road. And we're awaiting and expected by now to have the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments District Local Technical Assistance grant-funded assessment. I've been assured by Justin Howard that that presentation will come to the board at the end of January. I believe it's a meeting on the 23rd, he's scheduled for, to receive that assessment in terms of the outreach he did to the state officials, you know, about can we get access, you know, to Route 3. I know he reached out to Westford, much like this board has, and otherwise. So, Justin should be giving that presentation in a month, next month.
Paul?
Yes.
So, we had our legislators sign off on the request for NIMCOG to do this study. Should we give them a heads up or a tentative invite if they want to come to that board meeting for that report?
Okay.
What do you guys think?
Makes sense.
Always good to see them.
Okay.
Did I say something?
Sure.
Paul, you remember like maybe eight or nine years ago, we had on Stedman Street, towards, going towards Chelmsford, Golden Cove. And it was backed up, and we had all kinds of complaints because people were making a left on Dalton Road and going down Subway, Sonica.
Yeah, Silver.
So, we tried, so we decided we were going to, you know, like three hours in the morning, you know, to stop any traffic from cutting through there. And then the neighbors kind of dropped the ball on us.
Yeah.
And we had like two or three meetings down there. I think somebody approached you on this, Kenny? Somebody mentioned it to me that they, somebody recently approached you on it.
Recently?
Well, I don't know, maybe, I don't know. You know, I'm not...
There's, there's still a sign there that says you can't take that left. So, you mean?
No, in other words, they took, they, I don't know if that's what it says. But you couldn't go in, you couldn't go take a left on Dalton and then cut down all the side roads to get out on Chelmsford Street. And that would, so you wouldn't have to wait all the way from going from Dalton Road all the way down to, and go to Chelmsford Street. It would save, it would save, it would save you probably 10, 15 minutes. And we did, we had it, and the people didn't come in for that. We were going to make it. So, I just...
So, at that five-way intersection, you're going to make a no-left turn?
Yes.
Was only down that, that side street, not, not on...
Four streets, four streets. Because if you go another one up, it's...
Well, I think, no, I think you're saying like when you pass Westland's Subway, those who are there, not, not that extension, not the diagonal street.
That subway.
Oh. Yeah, nobody's approached me on that.
I mean, it would help, I think, because, you know, it'll do, it'll back that traffic up, and maybe somebody will start looking for alternative routes instead of cutting through.
It will back that traffic up.
It will. You know what I mean? And, and, you know, it's dangerous because there's a lot of, they say that, you know, the kids, there's a lot more kids in that neighborhood now. I don't know if it'd be truthful. It's only what I've told by neighbors there. I did get a few calls, and I said, we try to do it. I don't know. We had a meeting right on the steps of the Weston School.
Yep. I did have someone calling me and complaining about the speed of the traffic through those neighborhoods, not necessarily the traffic.
Okay.
But the speed was just...
Well, the traffic maybe has to be looked at, I think. It could be. Well, you know, while you're talking about truck traffic, because I know, I brought up, because truck traffic is a problem on, has been considered to be a problem on Dalton Road. But, but I mean, that's got nothing to do with what we were talking about, but I just thought...
I mean, I think once a week at least, I see someone in a head-on bumper jam there because they were taking a left on Dalton, and then someone coming out of Subway Extension, plus Stedman go at the same time, and you end up with a light head-to-head collision. So, if you did a no-left in the morning, that, you'd probably avoid an accident, too. I don't know. I don't know where else they'd go because they wouldn't be able to go up on North Road, and that's just as bad.
They'd have to stay on the highway or whatever, you know.
So, would that be something to go to the traffic group?
Yeah, I can bring it back to Traffic Safety Committee.
Yeah, I mean, just to assess it. So, yeah, that's...
I know we brought, we brought the speed to Traffic Committee before, and they stuck a cruiser over there that measured, there was some light speeding.
Yeah. But I'm talking like a long, a long time ago. And we actually shut down Golden Cove Road, and they, they let us open it up again at that time.
Thank you, George.
Okay, number four was the ARPA funding in terms of providing routine reporting on the status of ARPA funds and individual project status, including initial procurements. And then the remaining funding allocation, make sure that that's complete by December of 2024. The Public Works Director, or in her absence, the Facilities Director, but long photo, returned to the Public Works Director, has provided monthly status reports on the ARPA projects. The goal and the expectation is that 95% of the procurements will be in place by the end of the fiscal year. As I noticed this, I had a meeting again last Friday with the Facilities Director and the Superintendent of Schools and the School Facilities Manager. And then Christine will come back, when she's back next week, to these monthly meetings. And we're on top of it, and as, we remain confident that the work will get procured. And, and also the addition of the Assistant Facilities Manager, the temporary position will also help that. So, there's a lot of stuff to be procured over the next couple of months. And then again, once that's completed, the allocation of the balance of ARPA funding can be discussed this spring, as was forecast.
Paul?
Yes.
My head still hurts on why we don't have a column for actual dollars spent and only a column for encumbered.
Okay.
And is it, is it, is it, is it because these are all fixed price and whatever the contract is issued at is what we're going to spend?
We, we, I'll revisit that with the accounting and with the developments.
It just seems like if there's a way to track actuals, the encumbered is good, but when you track actuals as of a certain date, you can actually see what your spend rates are and how you're, how you're doing with it. And I think some of those, some of the projects aren't, aren't the fixed-price projects for the facilities. There's other projects in there besides that that are outside of DPW. It would be really nice to see what the actuals so far are.
Okay.
Number five is budgets. Provide more frequent and early visibility into the operating budget and key issues, and enhance the board's awareness and opportunity to weigh in. And then the capital budget, similar, providing more infrequent visibility and awareness. Again, going back a few months, as early as last September, we've been, I've been periodically reporting to the board the issues that have arisen as they've arisen, such as the, the increase in the county retirement assessment as a result of the, the biennial certification valuation report, our projected increase in health insurance premiums, the increase in solid waste recycling collection disposal costs, that contract bids are, are expected in the next, I believe it's next week on that contract. And then we, I notified the board most recently about the increase in road salt. At the last meeting, I provided you with the capital budget requests. As they arose in real time, I sent them out to the board. And the, the Capital Plan Committee met twice last Wednesday and Thursday to review the requests, and is scheduled to make its recommendations this coming Thursday. And then that will get discussed at the tri-board meeting next Monday. And then, then basically, nothing will get advanced until the end of January when I submit the capital and operating budgets to the Finance Committee, according to the schedule. So, I think the thing to note is, you know, is the demand upon, right now on capital, because of inflationary impacts and, and just, again, the legitimate requests that have come forward from the school department, Public Works, and other departments of the town. You know, the list is, as I presented to you, is, you know, is almost $7 million. And, you know, the target funding amount is $4 million. So, again, that would, we'll, we'll hear from the committee its priorities and recommendations this week. So, again, it's, it's just been a challenge. And then on the operating part of the budget, you know, we, as we noted these increases, the big challenge, and we'll talk about this next Monday, is with the new governor, and I've mentioned this before, we won't know the new governor's priorities and first budgetary proposal until March 1st, which is, you know, a month past when our budgets have to be submitted to the Finance Committee and to the community. And, and at this point, it was even reported today, the, we don't know, we also don't know the impacts on the new question one approval in terms of additional funding for transportation and education. There seems to be a lot of jockeying going around in terms of how that money's going to be utilized in terms of higher education, preschool education, local education, and then how it would be allocated at all, and then what portion of that would go to education versus transportation and so forth. So, a lot of uncertainties, and I think that's going to be the message that we'll, we're dealing with. But again, as soon as I can get insights, you know, I will provide them to the board. You will hear from the Superintendent next week. You know, they have all their bargaining agreements reached at this point, but they're dealing with an extraordinary increase in special education costs that the state has granted all districts across the Commonwealth. I believe it's 12 or 14% increase, when normally those increases are 2% to 3%. So, anyway, I'll continue to update the board and provide visibility on that. Where we are at the, what the operating budget is, is that's, you know, we'll, we'll have some initial discussions in terms of that next week. But again, you won't see anything now for six or seven weeks. But I, as soon as I can get a handle on that, I'll be presenting that to you, you know, well in advance at the end of January, probably at the beginning of January. We've got three meetings in January, so I can touch base with you. And, you know, it, we, it also is, the other reality is, is with the Finance Director out on medical, limited capacity, you know, that we're a little behind on that. Yeah, just, just the reality of the situation. In terms of tax strategies, number six, the first focus is on tax classification, continuing early and frequent review and assessment of data to inform the board in FY '23 and future tax classification approach and strategy. And then the second one was opportunities for senior citizen property tax relief. And as the board sought, Chief Assessor Frank Green presented information to, to this board on July 25th and September 26th, leading up to the November 7th tax classification public hearing. I worked with, with Frank as our Chief Assessor to explore additional property tax relief to senior citizens. Two proposals were, were presented to, first to the Select Board, and then obtained approval at fall annual town meeting for senior property tax relief. That was the increase in the $500 increase in the senior citizen property tax work-off program to allow seniors to earn up to $1,500 per year, as well as the $500 increase in the clause, what's known as the Clause 41(c) property tax exemption. That basically benefits the 40 seniors who are of, you know, of limited means under the state law or option. So, that's where we are with those two options. Number seven, legislative leverage, including our legislative posture, strategy, and relationships towards more deliberate and proactive benefits for the town with clear understanding of the budgeting process and state's budgeting process and timelines. Well, again, this was sort of all in abeyance until the November state election. We now have a new state legislative delegation. And I think now that they can exist, and as you just mentioned earlier about inviting them on the traffic thing, I think we, we can invite them in for a day to discuss how to, you know, establish and improve relationships and also identify the budget cycle processes that they'll be going forward. It's sort of a unique... It's a, it's a unique period with two, you know, two of our three representatives are new. And, and I think, you know, it's sort of time, like you said, to lay the groundwork and identify some priorities and goals with them.
So, are you thinking to invite them in on, like, maybe we have a discussion with them if we're going to invite them when NIMCOG does the report?
Yeah, you'd probably do it the same night. Yeah, because, yeah, because I, you know, I think that would make the most sense, is having them come out the same night.
Are they on recess, then?
Well, they're not. I mean, they, they convene session, you know, the first week of January, but they're not in heavy session. I mean, basically, what happens at the beginning of session, bills get filed, they're doing all their assignments and so forth. But I, I can invite them to the, you know, to the, to the meeting, you know, which would be the January 23rd.
Right, it'll be two purposes, to hear NIMCOG's report and then to have a working discussion with us?
Yep.
Thank you.
Item eight is the Chelmsford Center for the Arts. Establish a routine reporting on the CCA towards assuring the board support for critical efforts and progress on the three-year strategic plan. Our new Executive Director, Alexi Latimore, was before the board on September 12th, and she's scheduled to be at your January 9th meeting for the next quarterly report. And, and she is mindful, you know, as we discussed then, and about, you know, the three-year strategic plan and the pathway going forward. On civic engagement, it was identify and begin implementation to improve board selection communication, collaboration with boards and committees, and how the Select Board and manager can support them. 9B was Economic Development Commission, a path forward on the dormant commission. And 9C was youth and young adults, evaluate options for increasing engagement with, and with young adults in the community and implement as appropriate. Many of those were goals that, other than 9B, those were goals that begin, you know, sort of January, February timeframe. But we, I did initiate an Economic Development Commission status discussion that occurred on November 2nd to examine the role going forward. And they recommended, as was reported to the Select Board in November 7th meeting, that the EDC be dissolved as a standing committee. And that recommendation was accepted by this board. And again, as, as I noted, the other remaining items are to be initiated after the start of the new year. Process improvement, 10A, gap analysis for each department with recommendations, and 10B procurement, assessing current procurement processes with recommendations for process improvement. The area of gap analysis, I've listed some items. I don't need to read all of them in terms of, you know, but a lot of it had to do with providing on the permit database and, and improving workflows and sharing data and permits across departments. And on the DPW, you've, there's a new trash and recycling mobile app for residents to, you know, to be able... you know, to be able to address issues that arise, and that's improved that. And they've also initiated some procurement process improvements. And then there have been other efforts on what I call the general administration of the town, meaning outside of DPW. We, we have departmental meetings on a weekly basis to update overall communication between departments. We have a departmental sign-off sheet for license applications for the select board. 25 employees of the town attended a three-day supervisory training session. We're piloting an auto-assist vehicle maintenance software with the police department, with the possible expansion to other departments, such as DPW and fire department, and revising the town's personnel policies. Back on November 21st, which is just a couple of weeks ago, I had arranged, and they appear, the Matthews Office of the Inspector General came at the community room at the police station, provided a three-and-a-half-hour general, mass general watch, chapter 30(b) procurement training to 25 department heads and employees. And then we'll provide in-depth additional procurement training and certification for select employees who are critical pathways in the procurement, such as our new public works director and so forth. So the, like I said, the Inspector General's training was, was a good refresher. The superintendent of schools was there and others, and it was, it was a good dialogue. As I said, it was a very productive morning over there reviewing, you know, the fundamentals of 30(b). So that's where we are on process improvement.
Go ahead.
Is there anything from that training that should be extracted and updated into policy for procurement?
Well, what was, what was given to them was a, you know, I guess a lot of word, you know, a sort of a mini manual. I mean, there's an online manual, it's a mini manual. And, and I think, you know, we're, I think we're in good shape. I don't know of any particular policy document that has to be updated, but I think we're in good place.
So is it, you know, would there be something there that should reference that manual?
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean? So on the policy standpoint, so I wasn't here for the, for the training?
Yeah. We had a sign-in, we had a sign-in sheet for everybody to make sure that everybody documented who was there for the training.
Right, I'm just thinking downstream, if that is the manual that will be the, kind of the backbone for what you do, should that be referenced in one of your policies? That's all I was wondering.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Okay.
So is the bulk of your procurement system improvement right now, the training and making sure everybody is trained and educated?
Certification, yeah.
Is that different than, under the DPW bullet, it says procurement process improvements? Was that?
Yeah, I think that, that had preceded the training, you know, in, in working with Christine as she was coming in, we, we sort of initiated a number of, of check-offs and so forth. And as, and as this board had requested, we're providing you with all copies of the RFPs that go out, the results of those and so forth, in real time, as the RFPs are issued and so forth. So, and the other checkpoint we'll have is the, normally by now, we'd have our audit report. We're expecting that now, next month, and so that will be another check-off in terms of if they came across anything. But I'm, at this point, I'm not aware of any concerns. Item 11 is Parks and Recreation, about establishing a communications program that explains procedures and uses of the town's park and recreation act assets. And again, that's a, that's a January till April goal, so we'll begin that after the new calendar year start. 12 was strategic planning, develop a town strategic plan. Again, this is another third quarter or fourth quarter goal. And then a growth strategy for growth and priorities. And again, I think that's going to start with our meeting two nights from now with the Planning Board, Board of Health and Water Districts to discuss water and sewer capacity solutions. It's going to, because one of the questions that we'll discuss on Wednesday, and it's one of the agenda items, is, is, well, what, what capacity are we seeking? What's the vision for growth for the community? And, and this actually came up at the NIMCOG meeting that I referenced earlier, that the, it wasn't NIMCOG, the NIMCOG Director Jenny Ray coordinated the meeting of the municipal managers of the nine NIMCOG communities. And one of the things I think they'll be bringing back to NIMCOG and amongst our group is, we really need to establish a vision. And again, we'll talk about this in a couple of nights, is what is our vision for growth? But, you know, and, and, and I, and I think that was a theme that resonated amongst the different communities in our discussion today, was what are we looking to be? I mean, we're, we're 36, in terms of Chelmsford's case, we're a 36,000 population community, which, which I think fair to say has a little bit of multifamily residential fatigue. So what are we aspiring to be in terms of a vision, in terms of, you know? Obviously, the NIMCOG's working on a 2050 plan for transportation and other issues, but where are we looking to go in terms of the, the development of the community? And therefore, that's going to shape what we need for sewer capacity, water capacity, and so forth. And, and I think that, and I think that will be helpful, because that really is not part of the master plan discussion in terms of the implementation committee, but I think that's going to be helpful. So anyway, I think that's, that's, I want, want the board to know that these issues are starting to percolate out in, in, in discussion, and I think you'll see it at the NIMCOG level, because they're talking about a regional housing plan. We're also having discussions about how to address the homelessness problem in the region and so forth. And a lot of these discussions are going to play in terms of what is it that we're aspiring, you know, to be as a community and as a region.
So just for reference, I called up on the screen, it's also in your packet, the original goal in the, the how, the how measured? And both of these were, we wanted to have a discussion about what, if anything, we do with these. Because when we had the growth strategy last year, we had a lot of pushback on that. Like, why, why is the select board doing that? So, and, and I, I appreciate the discussion that's coming this Wednesday, but I, I don't know if it would be appropriate to schedule an agenda item some night to talk about these two things, and what do we actually want to do with them? Because that was really why we put them on there. We didn't have, we knew we would never develop an entire strategic plan this year, but what, if anything, do we want to do with that? And I think that goes hand in hand with a growth strategy. So I just wanted to kind of put that reminder calibration point out there. So Paul, maybe in addition to this Wednesday, whatever the outcome is from that, we look at whether we put something on a future agenda? Because we said we weren't going to do much with this until after the first of the year.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the final goal, 13, which is critical, sort of critical goal, continued tracking and support, the first one being Warren Pole. The goal was to complete the development of the plan and conservation restriction for the farm and work with the stakeholders and the wishes of the family. As the board's aware, because it was announced here, the commission has made improvements to the property along with the assistance of Public Works, that the entrance and parking area signage and so forth. And they announced the grand opening of the Warren Pole property in September. And I think in the couple of months it's been open, the feedback has been very positive. I think the biggest request we've had is we want better signage to identify the entrance to the property, so. But there really have not been any issues, to my knowledge, with the neighbors, you know, or the Warren Pole family. And then the, the conservation restriction is, is in the process, and it is, you know, of working with town council and the land trust towards implementing that restriction. So hopefully in the, you know, next few months, we'll have that hopefully finalized. You know, that has to do with a lot of survey assessments of the property and so forth in terms of baseline reports and such. In terms of the fire stations, tracking progress of the fire stations and support as needed, I guess the best thing, simplest way to do it is the fire station, there'll be a discussion at your next meeting on the 19th regarding an update on the work that the state, that the committee's been doing in terms of the items that you see listed in the bullet, in terms of how the, that the committee's been assessing the condition of the stations, analyzing response times, considering alternative configurations of stations, apparatus requirements, staffing levels, and safety needs of the community and the firefighters. There are no conclusions at this point, but it's, it's a check-in from the committee in your next meeting on the 19th. And then in terms of PFAS, Richardson Road, evaluation of the PFAS issues, ongoing implementation of the response action plan, time, phase sampling and data collection. The good news is, is Weston Sampson has provided timely reports on the quarterly PFAS sampling. The most recent sampling round was in November, and in my discussion with Paul McKinley, I think a week or two ago, we may have something for your next meeting, but if not, it'll certainly be early January. It's just depending on how the labs can get the data out. But obviously, Weston Sampson has been, you know, performing this, you know, in a timely manner, and also assisting the town in addressing other concerns relating to PFAS. And all the timelines and action plans thus far have been up to date. And then finally, the town common and continued tracking and support. Back in, this is tracking, supporting disposition of suggested town common improvements, including those identified in the June 2022 listening session, and supporting responsive departments and committees as needed. Back in October, I provided you with some information on the installation of a sound system at the town common. Most recently, I've been working, I attended the tree committee meeting last month virtually on developing a proposed tree planting plan for the town common. That further discussion is scheduled for this Thursday, so I would expect either later this month or in January, we'll have a discussion on the proposed tree planting plan for the common area. And again, with the sound system, and then, and not to be forgotten is the issue of the crosswalks in the center, in terms of what can be improved and modified. So again, we're finding, as, as has been in the past, we're finding difficulty trying to get a straight crosswalk from the CCA to the common, but we're looking at the broader issue, and I know it's been raised by selectwoman Wojcik and others, about, well, is there a way to improve the whole crossing in the whole center? So that's where that goal stands.
Any questions? Thank you, Paul.
Just a brief report this evening, under community preservation, FY '23 state contribution to the town. It was announced right after our last meeting, the state is matching a 30.3% match for community preservation funding. At this time, they're required to do that with the close of the state fiscal year. Chelmsford's going to receive $396,376, which is that 30.3% match. That's the, the second highest we've ever received. It's not equivalent to last year's match of $540,000. However, we may get there after all, because that distribution didn't include the $20 million in the state budget surplus bill that the governor signed off. And so we expect to receive notification of the distribution of those funds, but it's unclear, even from the Community Preservation Coalition, when that will take place. But the good news is, is, you know, the community preservation funding continues to be a priority at the state level. It's going to be a challenge going forward, because it's tied to the real estate deeds transfer tax. And obviously, if the housing market slows down, which it is, that means there's fewer transactions in terms of mortgage refinancing or real estate transactions. And the other thing of note was the state's second largest city, Worcester, just adopted this Community Preservation Act at, at the November election. So they've joined Boston and a few others, and obviously, because of their size, they command a significant amount of presence of funding. So the next item is the seal of weights and measures inspection fees. You see, I have provided a copy of, of an email that I received on the 29th of November from Jenny Ray, the executive director at NIMCOG. And as you can see, she's settling in and really getting into the weeds. And one of the areas that she identified as a need is the weights and measure fees for the inspections to the electronic price checkouts, the scales, gas pumps and so forth. And basically politely informed the communities, including Chelmsford, that you need to raise your fee structure and other to cover the cost to employ people to do these services. Apparently, it's been two decades since those fees were last adjusted, and she provides a recommended funding schedule that would cover the cost of the program for the, for FY '24. That, by statute, that has to be done by town meeting vote. And believe it or not, under state law, under the weights and measures law, so I'll work with town council Paul Havity and bring that as a town meeting warrant article, and probably incorporate it into the town's bylaws. The only challenge with that is, much like I just sort of described, is, you know, the change of fees, you've got to go to town meeting and, and have them approved. So anyway, so we will do that. And again, I want to caution, inform the board, these aren't significant adjustments in the fees. I mean, you're talking fees going from $200, you know, to $225 for scales that are 10,000 pounds or over, you know, such like you'd see at the asphalt plant and so forth. And then price verification fees going up by $25 or $50, depending upon the number of electronic checkouts in a business establishment. And, and, you know, gas pump fees going from $30 to $40. So, you know, it's, every, I know every bit impacts, but it's, you know, I think what she proposed was quite reasonable.
Because that's just for Chelmsford.
That's just for Chelmsford, yeah.
And the inspector does?
Does all the towns, right, yeah. So you're right.
Four thousand bucks total, and it's not even.
Exactly. So you can see, our, our thing probably pays a third of a salary of, of the person who's out there doing it, you know, the whole time, and benefits cost. And then the other items I added in my report real briefly, just status report, we're still working with the attorneys and the property owners on the Brookwalk easement, so there's really no material movement on that. The, on the request to rename Abnasa Drive, I did correspond with Carly Ream, who was on our last meeting. The diversity committee is going to take this up at its next meeting and provide a recommendation to me and pass it on to the board in terms of the, the question. And as I said, I'm hoping to transform that into a policy going forward, which we could probably work with the planning board, the 911 commission, that, but let's, let's, you know, in terms of respect in the history of the town, as well as its, the, the native inhabitants of, of, of the lands going forward. And then the economic debil airmarks, again, still no clarity in terms of when those funds will become available and how they can be used. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Paul. So next up, we have the additional all-alcoholic beverage license for off-premises consumption. You want to introduce this?
Yeah, I mean, remember, this came out, this came out a year ago from the ABCC as a result of the 2020 census. And what it resulted in, because Chelmsford's population crossed the threshold, the board's allowed to addition, an additional off-premise all-alcoholic license. At the, you know, at the time, the board voted at its meeting on January, the minutes that were approved, the meeting on Janu, on November 29th, which were approved on January 10th, there was a one-year moratorium till the end of November of 2022 on any consideration of, of the issuance of the additional all-alcoholic license. And so Christine, Christina Bruce noted that, you know, oh gee, that's up for, for consideration again, so that's why we placed it on the agenda.
I'm okay with having another one-year moratorium.
Me too, but we're actually, we're, we're one shot, because the one is closing.
Yeah, we have one, yeah, we have them all issued, one's in transition from Vinyl Square to Princeton Street, yeah.
It's not, yeah, we're not going to have, it's already, it's claimed.
Sorry, transfer, we're waiting, we're waiting the state approval, yeah.
Well, they haven't, they're not ready to open yet.
Right, no, no, they're not going to open.
They haven't even started.
Right.
I think everybody's getting their share.
I'm still, I'm still struggling with, the last time we did the moratorium, I think what, what was explained to me was trying to manage, like, the locations across town. But I look at this map, and there's three within a mile and a half of each other. Or is that, is the 11 Vinyl Square, is that the one that's moving to Princeton Street?
That's the one that's moving to, yeah, 135 Princeton, 133 Princeton Street.
I mean, we can't really.
We can't, how, how do we?
We don't.
We, we can't manage where somebody applies a license for, so I'm struggling with why hold the moratorium.
When a board evaluates whether to grant the license, you can, one of your determinations could be the proximity of other licenses in the requested area. That's, that's what the, and that's why I think the map was.
But if we're trying to encourage business in town, and we're trying to help increase the town's revenue, I mean, it's the devil's advocate side of me, I'm having trouble understanding why we would just keep putting a moratorium in place. Can the other liquor stores not survive if another one comes up in town?
Well, I thought somebody mentioned that, that there were some that weren't doing
Well, I thought somebody mentioned that, that there were some that weren't doing as well.
Actually, I think they had one of their better years, but I still don't think that they're not going, they're not going to do it. The pandemic kept everybody home, and everyone was drinking at home, but I don't think that...
Well, it's true.
That's, you know, the worry is, by adding another license, depending upon where it is, if you do dilute the market share in that area, you could open yourself up for the chance that a liquor store stays afloat, starts selling to minors. And that's, that's one of the concerns that was voiced to me, was that if you, if you have too many licenses, you might have someone tempted, more tempted, because of finances, and they're not doing as well, to maybe look the other way with an illegal ID or that type of behavior. That's what you want to prevent.
I think the most recent request came from Hannaford's, if I remember correctly, and that was sort of a different territory than the town had ever considered, putting one in a supermarket. And then the question also became the proximity next to drum, you know, drumstick liquors. So that's sort of how the proximity question came in.
I think the other question, too, is if you open it up to the supermarkets, then all of them are going to want the same thing, and...
And then we saw what happened with that ballot, right, and then you saw what happened with the ballot question.
You draw the line because there's only one license to give, but...
Right, exactly.
Well, but we have, we have beer and wine licenses we can give, but we don't.
I'm sorry, Paul, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, you've got eight beer and wine licenses, Pat noted, but remember, this, this thing is in flux because there was that ballot question that was defeated in November that I think the legislature and the petitioners thought was going to get approved, and now everyone's curious is what's the legislature going to do in this new session, if anything, in terms of the liquor license issue. But again, bringing it back to Chelmsford, the question is, is, you know, does the board want to entertain an additional application? And then in order to provide fairness, you probably have to give a couple of months' lead time to allow any and all applicants to submit applications, because Christina does, you know, Bruce in our office does get calls periodically, including fairly recently, about, you know, a liquor license, because, you know, people who are in the business are looking for licensed locations, and that's why they call. They say, oh, Chelmsford's got eight, they've only issued seven, and so...
Paul, are you saying with the recent...
Nobody understood that question anyway.
With the recent question on the ballot?
Ballot question, yeah, that was going to expand.
But are you, are you saying that that could potentially affect whether we still have an extra license? Like, could they come back and say?
We, no, what the legislature may do is they may, they may allow for, the concern in Massachusetts is how many license, a license holder can hold. And what that ballot question was going to do is it was going to expand the number of licenses that an entity could hold, and therefore, because the big push was coming from convenience stores, meaning franchise convenience stores and supermarkets, because the confusion is, is if you're a Market Basket or Hannaford's or Cumberland Farms, you can't be putting out flyers and marketing if only some of your stores are selling beer and wine and some aren't. And that causes some of the confusion, which is why what you've seen to date is oftentimes next to a Market Basket, there's a liquor store, usually, which is somehow affiliated with the supermarket. And so, but, but what they're trying to do is go, the, the sales of those establishments are better if they're integrated into the store, like you'd see in New Hampshire. So as I said, so there's still a lot of push and pull at the legislature in terms of the beer and wine lobby, for lack of a better word, of licensing within the state. And again, what, we've sort of been caught in that, and now, again, with the quota assessment, we're, we're allowed to issue one additional alcohol license, as well as, as Pat noted, we have eight wine...
Still have eight, yeah.
Beer and wine malbeverage licenses to issue as well.
Okay, I don't think the police were too happy. I mean, they've always been against that, haven't they?
Right, yeah, yeah, they've, yeah, the chief has always spoken against it, right?
Against what?
Against having more.
Beer and wine licenses.
The current chief of the previous...
All of them.
Yeah, I don't...
Well, the only thing I wonder is, going back to your point, is we don't want to, for some reason, there's some opposition at the moment to issuing that eighth. Would it be worth, you know, getting some input to the board as to, is there, are there any concerns for an eighth from police? Are there any concerns from anywhere else, you know, that would stop the board from issuing that?
Well, I know, I know the police chief, when we were talking about doing one over at the meat place, what was it?
The Meat House. It was, it was Chelmsford Premium.
Across from Dunkin' Donuts, they wanted, yeah, I mean, he was opposed to that. He was opposed to doing anything at Hannaford's.
No, I think Mark's asking about the last liquor.
Yeah, that was the beer and wine, though, I was thinking more the full license, you know, the eighth.
You think he'd be okay with a, with a all-alcohol and not with a beer and wine? I mean...
I think the beer and wine opens up a different...
It's one license.
Yeah, the beer and wine thing, I think, opens up a whole other...
I thought the concern was integrating the beer and wine into the, into the butcher shop thing, as opposed to a standalone beer and wine store or standalone alcohol.
Then all Hannaford's, then everybody would be coming in looking for those licenses. And the fact that we've never given them out is kind of the thumb on the dyke, so to speak, is the way I understood it. But the one that's left, I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, I heard what you said, Ken, but, you know, I mean, I don't know if that's a really good reason to not consider it. You know what I mean? No, I hear you, I hear you.
It wasn't one of the package stores transferring it sold.
We were waiting an application, but it, it hasn't happened.
That was just the Roma, then.
Was that Lincoln?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I had heard, too.
We haven't received anything.
I don't know how that would, you know, was that for business reasons, you know, for sales, or?
But I think it's, I think it's more than, what I've heard is more than just the license in Chelmsford, it's the, all the licenses held by that entity.
Exactly, so I'm just looking at all these things and wondering how that affects us making the decision.
If he was knocking them dead, I don't think he would have sold them.
Well, you never know.
It's only my opinion, I don't...
Yeah, everybody has different reasons, so...
Well, I mean, as far as, as far as this one, I mean, you know, last year when we were talking about it, Christina had noted that she, without even any of our discussion, had already received five inquiries about it. I think if we open it up, you know, it's, it's going to be tough to kind of control that.
Yeah, I wasn't really thinking about opening it up to all the applicants coming in, I was thinking more opening it up to, like, police and fire, if they had any concerns, maybe, I don't know if it's even appropriate, but Chelmsford Business Association, are there any concerns there? You know, are there any other concerns?
Board of Health.
Yeah, Board of Health, and are there any reasons why there's certain areas that should be excluded? You know, I mean...
You could, you could extend the moratorium either for another year and have those discussions, and if you decide to reverse it, reverse it, or you could extend it for another three months or another six months.
As long as you could reverse it, I'd be okay with it.
And, and bring people into it. But even if we extend it for a year, your suggestion is we, we bring the stakeholders in and have a better conversation around it to determine if we want to continue extending it, reverse it, or just not extend it again.
Know why we're putting a moratorium in place or not.
I agree, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the...
Have some rationale.
I, I think the concern that if times get tough and people start trying to sell to minors is a, is a valid concern, but it's, on the other hand, it's speculation that that's going to happen, or that sales are going to plummet so badly, people are going to be desperate, and I just, I'm torn on this because I, I can see both sides of it, but I like Mark's suggestion to just get a little bit better informed.
Yeah, so if we want to put a moratorium and keep it, we have rationale for why.
Yeah, we could do that now.
You know, and maybe if, you know, circumstances change and rationale is overcome, then we will change our minds.
How long have we been at seven?
Yeah, I don't remember the town ever being under.
Probably 30 to 35,000.
You know, when you sit there and you think about it...
We've never been under seven.
I think it's like 30 to 35,000 is that range of...
Right, that was a trip.
Yeah, yeah, so when we went over 35, that's when we got the extra.
Yeah, so I mean, if seven can service 20,000 people, can eight service 35,000 people, you know what I mean, that, you would think it would be doable.
We haven't seen any go out of business. Usually they transfer, right?
Yep. I hear you.
Well, there has been a couple of, filed bankruptcy.
So, and if we invite, if we invite these other stakeholders that Mark has mentioned in, maybe we could just address both questions at the same time. Additional beer and wine, the scenario is, right? A standalone additional, whatever kind of licenses, all-alcoholic off-premises consumption? Standalone beer and wine, integrated either? I'd be fine with that approach.
Do you want me to try to schedule that for your January 9th meeting? That gives a month notice to the different parties to come in, and I don't think that'll...
I mean, we have to do something tonight because the moratorium expired.
You could, you could do a three-month extension on the moratorium, because even if you decided in January you're going to go, you would probably need a two-month window for them to, you know, apply, because you want to be fair in terms of providing an opportunity. So if you did a three-month moratorium, and then in terms of the issuance, then I think that would, you know, should be sufficient.
If we, and if they, if we did a, if we did a one-year or a six-month, we could reverse that if we decided to?
Yeah.
Or is that harder to do?
The only drawback of that is if, if somebody could tune you out, in other words, you, somebody learned, oh, you had a six-month moratorium, then they stopped paying attention, then all of a sudden, they, they learned afterwards that you, you know, rescinded a portion of it.
Yeah.
What happened?
I think the three-month would be better, then we can extend it.
That takes us to the end of February?
Yeah.
Well, we could say until the end of March, I mean, it doesn't have to be exactly three months from right now.
Yeah, we just say until the end of March, because, you know, one meeting may lead to a second meeting until we get things solidified, so...
Yeah.
Oh, March 31st.
Let's not be in a rush, Tom.
Ken, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
George? Okay, well, then let's do a motion.
I'll make a motion to extend our moratorium on issuing any additional all-alcohol beverages packaged stores licenses for off-premise consumption until the final meeting in March 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? You want the final meeting in March or March 31st? Doesn't matter.
March 31st is a little cleaner, but, but whatever.
Yeah, what if it moves?
What if what moves?
The meeting, or you want the, oh, I thought you were telling me there's a meeting on the 31st, but it's the final meeting of March...
Yeah, but...
But what if the meeting moves?
All right, so, fine.
Or the meeting's a joint meeting with the school committee.
Welcome back.
I will make a motion to extend the moratorium on the issuance of any additional all-alcohol beverages packaged stores license for off-premise consumption to March 31st 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Okay, next we go to minutes, the Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes for November 21st. Are there any amendments before we take a motion? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular, Select Board of Regular Meeting Minutes from November 21st 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. I have an announcement on the determination of releaseability of executive session minutes. The minutes for November 7th 2022, Segment 3, were released, and the minutes for October 11th 2022, Segments 1, 2, and 3, were held not for release. Liaison reports and referrals, Mark?
I'll say, thank you.
George?
I'll say.
Ken?
I'd just like to compliment the town, Paul, I mean, you had three activities this weekend, from what I understand, everything went off without a glitch, and everybody was happy, they haven't heard anything, and the center looks beautiful, so my kudos to DPW.
Yeah, and all the volunteers, and public safety as well, I mean, you know, police and everyone, and DPW, they were at, you know, Sunny Meadow Farm, they were, they were at North Chelmsford and Vinyl Square, and then last night, and Chelmsford Center, and just the volunteers who, you know, who give of themselves to coordinate the event. I mean, it all looks great, as you said, you come through or when you show up, but there's a lot of behind-the-scenes preparation and, you know, by the committee, and, you know, from everything, from the wreaths and the lights to the, you know, arranging the carriages and Santa Claus and everything else, it was, but, you know, it was just, it really was great to see how everybody pulled together, whether it was Vinyl Square...
Oh, so we can be proud of it.
Phil Stanway and the group of folks up at the Sunny Meadow Farm, and then in the center last night, it was really great. I think people felt it was finally back to like a pre-COVID normal celebration, which was nice.
Which is, I think, one of your goals you wanted, Pat.
There you go. That's right from three years ago, maybe?
Yeah, that's right, patience is a virtue.
Pat?
I have a couple of things. One ribbon-cutting since our last meeting at Tiny Tile Mosaics, which is in the center of town, really interesting what they do, you should stop by and check them out, a good, good little company there. And a few personnel changes from the Chelmsford Police Department. Lieutenant Ed Quinn retired. As a result of his retirement, Sergeant Frank Good was promoted to lieutenant, and as a result of that promotion, Patrol Officer Robert Brown was promoted to sergeant. So congratulations to all three of these gentlemen for their, for their retirement and their promotions.
Thank you. I have a few from the Board of Health. The Health Department is holding walk-in flu clinics every Tuesday evening from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Health Department Office for people who are 19 years old or older. And they have a limited supply of flu vaccine for those who are six months through 18 years of age, by appointment only. If you would like a youth vaccine, call the Health Department and ask for Darcy at 978-250-5241. The Capital Planning Committee heard project requests on November 30th and December 1st, and they'll be meeting on December 8th to prioritize. From the School Committee, they held a parent forum last week to discuss the middle school reconfiguration, and they are also waiting to hear from the MSBA on the statement of interest regarding a new middle school. The School Committee has also engaged a company to provide a safety and security audit for the district. This includes looking at things like building security, Alice drills, and procedural manuals, and they are continuing to work with the DM Group on the strategic plan for the school systems and the special education audit. The Planning Board's next meeting on December 14th will include a continued public hearings for the 270 Bilrika Road 85,000-square-foot warehouse and the 250 Apollo Drive 35,000-square-foot warehouse. And from the Age Friendly Committee, they would like everyone to be aware that you can tune into Chelmsford Telemedia for an age-friendly Chelmsford monthly TV show, where they'll talk about different initiatives, information, and programs for people of all ages. And this month, they're featuring Social Services Coordinator Jen Malancy, Jen Malanson, excuse me, and the show is co-hosted by Deb Sierani and Lisa Maroney. And that's all I have. It is 7:25, and I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining with the police superior's officers, also known as the Sergeants' Union, strategy with respect to the collective bargaining with the firefighters' union, and removal of the deputy chief position with civil service. Review executive session meeting minutes from our November 7th meeting, Segments 1, 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3. Review our executive session meeting minutes from November 21st 2022, Segments 1, 2, 3, and 4, not to return to open session.
Second.
Mark?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I vote aye. We are adjourned.